Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just checking to see if I can scroll through. Okay, this is the first one. Okay, so basically each one of these things I'm gonna go through, just gonna go through it quickly and briefly. But I'm also gonna post this talk, what we're doing now, because I'm recording it. Um, if people wanna jump in and talk as well, um, and I'm gonna post the videos as well. So you can see the comparison of what we're looking at here to what she's actually teaching and what she's actually teaching at university, um, in U C L, in what the law of university and the students are actually learning. Um, but we know all of this kinda stuff already. But, and there's certain bits and pieces she's missed out as well, but we'll go through it. But, and, and again, as I said, I'll post the video, um, so you guys can watch the videos as well to actually see, um, and get a, a, a greater understanding from her perspective of her giving it to you. Cause I'm just gonna skim over it so we can question it as well in a certain respect, do you see? Um, so yeah, the first, the first thing. Okay, basically, I'm just reviewing Professor Dame Hazel, uh, Jen, um, yeah, as I was saying before. And this is to do with England and Wales. But we'll go, it'll explain itself as we go through. So basically what she, what she's looking at and what the kinda like course introduces in a certain sense is to say that, um, yeah, what is law? Yeah, so the English syst-, the is the, the law is the English legal system, um, based on the laws of the land, basically. Um, so what it is there is, uh, so, and then what she's saying basically is what is the content of a law? And how do we recognize a rule as a law in that certain respect? Yeah, so basically, as again, I'm just gonna run through it and then we can, we can look at it. But I'm gonna explain it as I go as well. Um, so basically law, um, this system of law and this body of rules we've got is ba-, basically a central concern, um, um, i- is the social order of things. So humans, um, in a society need rules to govern how they live, basically. I mean, like, just your neighbor, as they say. Um, so the social rules, um, and all of that body of law, we're just talking about law here, um, is uh, a matter of convention and convenience to everybody in that certain respect. Um, and basically what it is, basically that body of law, if you don't follow the rule, you might be excluded from that group, um, who is, um, in that, uh, specific area, um, as it, as it says there, the multicultural, we're multicultural now, basically. Because what's that meaning is basically England and Wales were split up into three different sections. There was Mercia, there was the Danes, and there was Wessex. Because remember, they was all captured by different kings and different people coming into the country, basically. So that all was captured back in the day. So that brought in the rules on how we live with one another and how we do business as well. Under the coercive powers of the state, meaning the rules we have to obey in that certain respect. Um, the rules are backed by the coercive power of the state. Um, and the rules that we have to obey. If we don't, if we do not, uh, and if not, we pay a penalty or a fine or imprisonment. Rules that we are obliged to follow. Basically, this is the law, yeah? So you've got the criminal law inside of the law, and then you've got the civil law. Uh, now the criminal law, um, they use as a fine and or prison, yeah? And then the civil law is money like compensation and or damages, for example. Um, law is not an, a new idea, um, she goes on to say, um, which we know. Because, and then she points at Aristotle, which is, uh, three eight four to three twenty-two before B C, basically, um, and he says law is order and good law is good order, basically. Um, underline the notion of the law that they follow. But this goes back way back to the code of Hammurabi, what I mentioned before. And that goes right back to seventeen fifty-five, uh, to seventeen fifty B C. Um, that goes way back then, so I think they're picking up that. And plus, the Jewish, in Deuteronomy, I'll look at it later, but in Deuteronomy, um, they used in Deuteronomy, um, some of the, some of the code of Hammurabi, like an eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth, is in Deuteronomy, whereas in the code of Hammurami, which was seventeen fifty-five, seventeen fifty before, um, Christ. Um, but we can go into that, I mean, you can look at that yourself as well. Um, so all of that basically is law, which is basically a man-made law because it follows codes and, um, legal systems and stuff like that. So then we come to the legal system. So what does the legal system mean? So basically, all these different laws, what was going on? Because remember, when, um, when you've got Dane, you've got Mercia, and you've got, um, Wessex. Now, each, each of these sections around England and Wales, they had different laws for themselves. So it was different all over the place, wherever you traveled over the country, it was different, yeah? So all these bits of law and the surrounding justices like the bailiffs, um, enforcements, um, the legislations that are acts of parliaments, common law, and everything legal, basically. These are the machinery that allows the legal system to function. The institutions and, and personnel, um, citizenas vice bureau, legal aid, et cetera. That's all basically the body, which basically come back down to what I keep talking about, the Lex Murgatoria, which is the body of laws that make up their own legal laws, basically, their own legal system. The English legal system is a, as a whole, basically, that's the legal system, all these bodies of laws, they're the legal system. So, United Kingdom, um, is made up of all four jurisdictions, yeah? The jurisdictions are England, Scotland, uh, Wales, and Northern Ireland, they're the jurisdictions. But the English legal system is only of the laws of England and Wales. The English legal system is only for that of England and Wales. But Wales is also creating its differences with England and now has and is developing their own system to pull away from England. So it's just gonna be all the separate jurisdictions itself, rather than England and Wales being together. They're developing something, Wales is developing something to pull away, um, from England. Scotland and Ireland have different legal systems based on their laws, on their laws, as so is Europe and international jurisdictions, yeah? So the four sources of English law is the English UK Parliament, which is for statutes, legislation, acts, written laws, et cetera, yeah? That's all the corpus of that. Um, then you've got the Supreme Court, um, and the Royal Courts of Justice. So you've got two courts there, you've got the Supreme Court dealing with all the top kinda like stuff. And then you've got a Royal Court of Justice, which deals with the common law courts, um, and all the decisions are made. Then you've got, um, the European Union, then you've got the European Courts of Human Rights. They're the four sources of English law we've got, um, in that certain sense. But only two are English sources of law, which is the Supreme Court and other courts of records, which is the common law. And then you've got the Parliament, which is acts and statutes, legislations, written law, et cetera, yeah? So with the, um, this is why when we're doing our deep poll, for examples, we're going into the Supreme Court and the, and the Courts of Record, which is the common law, which has nothing to do with Parliament in a certain respect, cause there's two different things going on here. You've got the law and then you've got the legal, yeah? So, but in nineteen ninety-eight, European Convention of Human Rights Incorporated emerged into and becomes part of English law as an additional source of English law, yeah? So basically, you've got statutes, which is run by Parliament. You've got common law, which is run by, um, the courts, uh, royal courts, and then you've got European law, yeah? But the most important law, as she says, out of all of that, is common law, yeah? She says the most important, so basically, yeah? And that's basically the body of how law is, has come about. Especially just from back in the day where it says about, um, from the Hammurabi and Aristotle, um, Arist-, Aristotle, Aristotle. Yeah, but yeah, that's the kinda like that, yeah? That is what is law. Okay, so what I'm gonna do now, I'm gonna move on to, um, this six, this section, shit, and I wanna go to, um, okay, let's close that one down. Okay, this, this gets, gets a bit more interesting here. Okay, so again, this is the second video she did. And basically, I mean, what she's, this back in here now is what is common law? Because common law is still a legal system. Now, common law of the land, meaning created and applied by judges sitting in a court, deciding on disputes in individual cases. So common law of the land created by a judiciary, yeah? So it's all these judges sitting in a court. The common law is as two, there's civil law or criminal law. Legal principles articulated in individual cases by judges, hence case law. So all these laws were done off individual cases and made a record of them cases to use as precedents for later, basically, this is case law. Case law is, is judges following decisions of other cases to make a decision that they are dealing with. The doctrine of precedents, following the reasons and legal principles used in previous documented as records, the yearbook and the law report, yeah? So basically, all of these different things, what the king was, um, doing with all these legal cases was documenting everything, basically, pointing it down into records, the yearbook. The yearbook is the yearbook, basically. So if you go and look up the yearbook, you'll find that these were all the, uh, precedent cases, basically. All the cases were kinda like side stuff, uh, so they can look upon, back on, um, to make judgment off. Um, a good thing to read, I've posted it in the group, a good thing to read is William Blackstone's, uh, Law Commentaries. Um, because that is the whole of the common law corpus. Yeah, what do, what puts the whole common law together, the legal si-, common law is a legal system, remember, it's still legal. Um, eighteen hundred Blackstone Commentaries of Law. Um, this is not Black's Law. Black's Law is Henry Campbell Black. That's the Black's Law Dictionary, but Blackstone is the Commentaries of Law, it's the different, two different individuals. William Blackstone and Henry Black, they're two different. Um, so yeah, check out the Blackstone Commentaries on that. Um, so how did common law develop? Um, they're putting down here, reasonable starting point would be like William the Conqueror, which is fair enough, yeah? But before that, basically, it was, um, Hamu, um, Ur of Hamu, which is Babylonia, and then Hamburami, and that's what I was talking about, Deuteronomy. Um, took some of the Hammurabi for the Deuteronomy, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, basically, um. But she skipped over this section, but I'm gonna come back to that, um, cause that's important. Because, actually, I'll speak about it now quickly. With Hammurabi, um, what it was, he was, if you look up Hammurami and done a Wikipedia on Hammurabi, he was linked with a god called, uh, Shamash, Shamash. Um, yeah, Shamash, S H A M A S H, Shamash. Um, and basically, what it was, the, 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 the rule was that the king had to be there to support the people. And if he didn't, the gods would come down on the king, basically. That's why we don't know about it, so they're trying to hide that kinda like storyline away from us. Cause a lot of them don't talk about it. Um, if you understand the story behind that, then you understand why the king, the king's there, but he's got to stand for the people, but because their people wasn't there, we was all in maritime law. Um, but I'll get back to that later, don't wanna go too deep down that road. But anyway, how did the common law develop? Reason to start point with King William, so let's go from King William. William the Conqueror was the first to try and unify a law throughout England and Wales. As I said before, before he conquered, there were shires where each county had their own law. You had the Dane law, you had the Mercia law, and you had the Wessex law. So no unitary, no unitary national legal system was in place. So each of the legal rules were different around England and Wales due to the old feudal system, yeah? The fealty, the feudalism, and all that business from all what was going on there, the robbing and all that stuff. Um, this was local courts in eleven hundred. Um, their trials were by ordeal, basically, um, where it was just a barbaric system. I mean, like, if you was, um, like the hot iron story, um, there, if you was, if you was innocent, you had to, if you, if you was, if they, somebody charged you, you had to pick up a hot iron rod. And if it, if it healed over a few days, you were set free. If it wasn't, if it didn't heal over a few days, you got killed. But the reason behind it was if God, if God intervened and gave you justice and healed your heel, that means you, that means you was let free over a couple of, couple of days, you know? Not a month, four weeks, you know, hot iron rod. And make you pick out, make you pick out stones out of boiling hot water and things like this. These are the kinda things that common law was doing, man. Um, basically, the, the, the church condemned it in thirteen hundred, uh, so that's cruel. We could, we can wipe our brow with that one. So, power and order was had by King William, with, yeah, by, by William the Conqueror. And he laid the foundation, basically, of the English legal system. So basically, what he did, he drew together, um, the, the Dane, the Mercia, and the Wessex. He drew them all together and created one law throughout, yeah? Which this is what they call the, um, he created the Curia Regis. The Curia Regis is the king's court. And the king's court was his advisory bodies, basically. Remember, this is all common law, yeah? So, um, it was a court of law, but also the royal household, um, of the king and all the trusted advisors would gather there, basically. Um, so you had the court and court here, which are the magnates. The magnates are basically the businessmen and women who were very influential. The ecclesiastics, which were the, the clergymen and the clergy and the bishops and all that. And then you hide the high court advisors. So you basically had a group of individuals going around with the king. And they would travel around with the king to the different parts of the country and set his rules and hearing the disputes, giving judgments, of course, and there was fair rulings over their disputes. Because remember, they was coming into another town and nobody knew them. Well, they did know them, but, I mean, nobody know them, you know, here comes the king, who's that? So, yeah, they did know him, basically, they knew, but he would, they, he, they was, they was impartial to the disputes of the men and women, basically. So it was come across, and that's where, basically, he would come along, he would bring his little bench. He would put the bench down and he would sit and hear cases. This is where we get the court of the king's bench. This is where we get the king's bench, cause he used to travel around to all the different counties to sit down and listen to the people's disputes. Yeah, this is the king, yeah, and common law as well. So going around giving the commoner's rulings was the beginning of common law court, yeah? The system as a centralized system approach of unification. So this was, this is what King William was doing, he was going around the whole of the country, central, like, getting this centralized understanding of what this common law legal system was, that they was putting out. Um, the jury system was also introduced by way of the minister. Okay, jury system came from gathering like twelve free men from like each of the estates around. And they had to give their, their evaluation of how much this estate would cost, basically, overall to all the different estates around. And so basically, um, so only because of the ki-, the king was doing that to charge tax. So that's how the jury was built, or the three, of the, of the twelve free men, basically, this is what jury is today. Um, but it came from that, started there. Um, after William, okay, after William came Stephen. Yeah, King Stephen, a lot of people don't know about this guy. Eleven thirty-five to eleven fifty-four, he caused complete chaos. Because after William went, yeah, then you had, um, the, the line, um, where it was William. I'll come to that in a minute, but basically, he came in and caused a holy per chaos. Um, and basically, she said that, um, and what the saying goes is that when he came in to being the king, they're saying that God and the angels slept at this time, it was that bad. Crazy, man, so, and he just called havoc and chaos. So basically, this was the king's order, the king was like, okay, he had King William the First, ten sixty-six, ten eighty-seven. Then William the Second, then Henry the First, eleven hundred, then Stephen came in here, eleven thirty-five. Yeah, so he caused the chaos, then Henry the Second came in, which sorted out things. Then we had Richard First, then King John comes in there, which is the twelve sixteen Magna Carta, blah, 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 et cetera. Um, but yeah, so, as Stephen caused all this problem, um, King Henry the Second came in in eleven fifty-four. And he was one of the Angevinians, um, kings due to his connection to France. And also was, uh, Richard the First and also King John. Henry recovered, uh, the law, especially the land law, as lots were being stolen when Stephen was, was on the throne. And all this rampant crime was going on. Um, so yeah, Henry, Henry recovered all of that, basically. He created and wanted a single system of justice like King William. So he developed that judges from Westminster would travel around the country circuit for him. At, and at that time, there were only, okay, so there, there wasn't many people. So there was like only eighteen judges throughout the whole place. Um, but basically, what he had, what he was doing, he was saying, right, rather than going out like King William did go out and go around to all these different places, Wessex and Sussex, wherever, what King, what King, um, Henry would do, he would send out tw-, um, thirteen of the judges and, uh, and the, the, the priest and the bishops and, and the, the, basically, the people he trusted in a certain sense. Um, he would send them out preaching and using the legal system, common law legal system of Westminster. Rather than going out and having it, okay, if I went to Dane, I'll go up there and saw out the Dane. But I'm still gonna unify by using my law, but I'm going out there. But now what's happening, they've unified this law in Westminster now. Then they're saying, right, we're gonna take this law out or legal system out throughout the country and we're gonna preach that to the people and let them follow that. And we can resolve their disputes as we're doing here. So five, five of the, um, five of the judges stayed in London to help the king with those cases back in, in, in London as well. So the judges traveled, who traveled, had to apply the same rules of those in Westminster. So there was a commonality around the country, basically. So this is where the national laws were made, which created the common law, yeah? At that time of, um, Henry the Second. So he basically created the national laws, what made it common law. Um, over time, these decisions of the cases heard were written down and recorded, made to be passed to presidents. Uh, the development of the unified common law, um, is that the earliest report books are, yeah, that was the, basically, the development of the unified common law, yeah? Basically, because it was the earliest report books, uh, as known in the yearbooks, which I mentioned earlier, which was thirteen hundred, uh, early King Edward the First, developed into a recognizable common law legal system that we now have, basically. So the legal system we've got now is what, what, common law legal system, cause the common law is a legal system. Yeah, when people say about common law, it's not law, it's still a man-made written system, basically. Um, so the original reports were written in either French or Latin, which is really important. Because this is where it brings us back to, um, uh, uh, what I was speaking about Lord Mansfield, but they don't really discuss it here. And the dictionaries were written by Samuel Johnson in seventeen eighty-five. And they was written, the English dictionary was written of the English language, but he was using the language of French and, um, Latin and, um, uh, uh, French, Latin. Um, yeah, something like that. But anyway, just to reflect back on that now, what we've just gone over. The system of Henry the Second lasted until nineteen seventy-one. All the way back from there, from the eleven hun-, thirteen hundreds, yeah? Eleven hundred and fifty-four, Henry the Second came in. And all of this legal system of what's been going on, the common law legal system, has lasted up until nineteen seventy-one. Today, the king's bench judges still travel around the country to hear very serious civil and criminal matters. So the king still goes round to, as, as, well, the king bench judges still go round, uh, today, basically. So it's not like, it's not, it's not, it's not like common law isn't there. It is there, but it's how do we approach it in that certain respect, um, which we're learning, of course. In tw-, in the twelve hundreds, the king's court was decided due to all the chaos and bloodshed beforehand, like any fair court disputes, were not just criminal, but over land property, business, et cetera. Um, basically, not violence, but peaceful resolution, blame King Henry Stephen. So basically, the courts did come around again after King Stephen. Um, and, and the way of the legal system of the common law. So the common law legal system has influenced worldwide following for those who were colonized by the British. And some have mixed systems with the common law system. So the common law system, because Britain colonized so many different parts of the world, they carried that common law system with them as well. So a lot of the countries, they share that same system. Um, but a lot don't, do you see? So you've got to really, if we're doing all the law stuff and the legal stuff for ourselves, we've got to look at our own jurisdiction, as she calls it. They, they call countries jurisdictions, they don't call them countries, they call them jurisdictions. So if you are in your jurisdiction, understand the law of your jurisdiction, basically. So this basically gives us the common law, yeah? So we understand the law and how it developed through, um, the different layers of bringing and unifying all these different, um, different, uh, uh, things and stuff together. Um, so basically, the, 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 the last, the last one of that, basically, sorry, is this boring? I hope this is not boring.
No, not so, not so.
So, the last one, basically, uh, the last video she, she went on about, which was the development of, of the two. So you, first of all, we had the law, we understood what was, what is law, then we all just understood what is common law. Now, this is common law and equity. Again, I'm just reviewing the video, all three videos I'm gonna put up in the group. So you guys can watch the video and make sure you watch them, because this will give you a real good, juicy understanding and a foundation of what we're actually standing on. They miss, I mean, like, basically, it's just her introduction of like a lecture where the law students are gonna probably take in and go into study law. But what she gives this, in this like, if one video is like ten minutes, second video is like twenty-five minutes, and the third video is like eighteen minutes. But all three of them videos are really powerful, when you get to understand. There's things that she's, she misses out, which I will go through as well, as I'm going through this one. Cause there's things she's missing out as well, which she doesn't speak about, which I think that's done on purpose. But whether they learn that in the studies, when they're studying it, I'm not sure, but I, I doubt it. Okay, but this one is common law and equity. So the development of equity and its compass, uh, competition with common law, can you all see that, yeah? Is that cool? Um, so yeah, so the development of equity and its competition with common law. So equity was in competition with common law, yeah? It wasn't trying to be part of it in that certain respect. How it was merged and formed through the Judicature, Judicature Act, that's Judicature, Judicature. To get that word properly, Judicature. Judicature Act, yes. Equity means fair or just in its larger sense. But in the legal, it is the looser constraints of the severity of common law, yeah? So we'll get into the severity later on, as I spoke about, where you had to hold the hot rod. That's kinda like, that's severe, but there was, there was solution for that. So equity developed in the fifteen hundreds due to the problems of the common law court. So there was a lot of problems going in on the common law court. So, um, they developed the equity to step apart, as it says, it was the fifteen hundreds. But if we look back, did she misses out this section? But if we look back to twelve hundred, that's when, um, King John, in a certain sense, and the Magna Carta and all that stuff happened. And this is where the Lex Murgatoria started getting involved back then. But they don't discuss it here, but we'll come to that. Um, so yeah, common law had become slow, expensive, and very technical. Juries were being used in both criminal and civil cases, which was of concern for imitation, intimidation and bribery, et cetera, yeah? So all these juries and things like that, they was, but anyway, you get a picture there. A writ is a document of grievance to give permission to sue a king's. A writ is a document of grievance to give permission to sue a king's subject in the king's court, yeah. So people still partitioned the king for justice if they felt they could not get justice in the ordinary common law. Legal court, so they could petition the king, so we can still petition the king if we want to look at our problems. Yeah, so a petition or a bill was written to the king to address him and to appeal to the king's conscience. Yeah, the king's conscious, basically, for a time, the king and his counselors would deal with these cases themselves. Um, and because of that, the work began to grow. Because basically, when the court of, um, the common law and the chancery and that started coming in. Um, and, 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 um, the Lex Mercatoria with the merchants. There was a lot of business going on there, but what happened is. Because there was so much business going on in the Lex Mercatorian merchant court in the court of arbitration. Um, it was take, the bus- the business in the king's court was going down. So basically, what happened is that they started taking on the king court. And the council has started to deal with the key cases outside of, and that's when the court started, the king's bench started to grow again. The king then made it practice to pass it to the chancellor, who was the keeper of the king's conscience. Check out the keeper of the king's conscience if you haven't heard of that, do a Google search or we go on Wikipedia, look up the keeper of the king's conscience. This is the chancellor, this is the chancellor, the chancellor who is a bishop or a clergyman, yeah. And was learned in civil and canon law, remember, it's civil and canon law he's learned in. He's not learning in equity and, um, commercial, none of that business, it's civil and canon law, so it's the Lord Church, trusted advisor on the cleric. Yeah, who the king, uh, who the king and chancellor, a court was set up. Now, this court they set up, the chancellor and the king was called, called the Court of Chancery. This is chancery, yeah, this is the Court of Chancery. The court was set up to deal with petitions coming to the king directly and not to the common law court, as I said earlier on. Um, and to decide the case of conscience. So basically, the common law court was going off. Um, presidents and, um, different cases what had gone before. But some people didn't want that, some people just wanted a clear conscience from the king to say, is a right, is a wrong, yes or no. She's like, none of this business going through, you see, so that's what kind of like the, the chance we set up for in a certain respect. Um, so the chancellor and others did the writs of permissions and other legal documents for the king, et cetera. The chancellor dealt with cases differently to common law, yeah, that's, that's very important here. The chancellor dealt with cases differently to common law by not looking at case law precedent. But by what was morally right and fair of the circumstances. So again, it was the king's conscience, so he was going off his conscience. But the only difference, he was using his own individual sense of right and wrong. Rather than the king's sense of the right and wrong, you see, so it's kind of like pass hands now. So you got another man dealing with that rather than the king. And if we look back to Hammurabi, Hammurabi was saying that if the king doesn't stand for the people. Then God would sacrifice the king, basically. So kings passing it on to the chancellor for the chancellor's court, chancery, basically. Anyway, the chancellor and team was not doing it in an arbitrary fashion. But was drawing on legal principles of equity maxims, et cetera. But they was not using the common law approach that was being used to decide in the common law courts. So the courts of the men and women of the land wasn't being used. You had the courts what was being used with the merchants and the Lex Mercatorian, that body of law as well. So they was like merging the laws now, this is the thing. Equity is, um, is a more broad and flexible, um, approach, seduction and deception, deception, basically. So what they, what you mean, what they, what she was talking about, that is in fourteen seventy four, chancellor issued the first degree. In his own name, which started the independence from the king's council. Now, so now. Because the king and the chancellors created the Court of Chancery, the chancery has come dependent. And independent away from the king's council, yeah. So it's nothing to do with the king's court and nothing like that. So in fifteen hundred. Um, chancery becomes its own court, separate and whole, away from the king's court. So if you're going into chancery, it's nothing to do with common law, nothing. It's the, it's the council, it's the chancellor's own decisions now, you're not dealing with the king no more, you're dealing with the chancellor and his decisions. Chancellor's no king, yeah. Petitions came to the king's court and the chancellor would deal with the cases in a delegated way. Which gave rise to the chancellor setting up its own as the Court of Chancery, yeah. Court of Chancery then established new rights, new remedies and new procedures, you hear that? They s- they, they established their own rights, their new rights, their new remedies and their new procedures and how they done things. Yeah, basically, it was an alternative system of law. When you go and look it up, it's an A D R, an Alternative Dispute Resolution Court, which is an Court of Arbitration, it's an arbitration court. Yeah, where judges are using their own means of dealing with cases. But if you go to an arbitration court, you can only get, and if you win a case, you can only get an arbitration award. If that award isn't paid off by the, your debtor, then you will still have to go to common law court or court. To, to make that, um, award, arbitration award, um, active. So you, so there's no point going alternative dispute. The only reason people went to that court. Of equity because it was, it was fair and just as they saw it, yeah, but I believe that was just, just deception. Um, but okay, so equity created new rights by recognizing things known as trusts, yeah, you hear that? Equity created new rights by recognizing things known as trust. And the chancellor would recognize the idea that an individual could hold a legal title. To something, but only on behalf of another person, yeah. This is where the beneficiary and trustee came about, yeah. So the trust only came around in fifteen hundreds, yeah, in that certain sense. But what it was, because the chancellor, remember, the chancellor was a bishop, this is my note here. The chancellor was clergy, bishop, et cetera, so followed the church Vatican. Which Santos Bonarse talks about, or the first trust being set up in thirteen oh five, which is the Unum Sanctum, um, Quantifices. Um, Attorney Regis and Convocation, yeah, they had a free tier tiara. So basically, the clergyman, which was the chan- which is the chancellor, he's following that protocol. I believe, by bringing that trust into it, um. Now, this form known as trust was unknown and not recognized in common law courts. I'm gonna say that again. This form known as trust was unknown and not recognized in common law courts. Yeah, they didn't want it, didn't they? They didn't know it, they didn't know about it. The chancellor over at the new chancery court was prepared to recognize the trust, Vatican. To give beneficiaries rights against the trustees who hold the legal title. So we know that the beneficiaries, we are the beneficiaries, but somebody else is holding the legal title, yeah. So the, the chancellor was giving and recognized that trust. So the beneficiaries can have a right against the trustees to hold and claim the legal title. Now you understand what we're doing, yeah, we're going back and doing that, and we're claiming a limited company as the title. So we're the beneficiary, we're going collecting it, and we have the rights to go against the trustees who hold the legal title. So we're kind of collecting a limited company from the crown, because it's nothing to do with the chancery, it's to do with the king. We're getting our names and stuff from the crown, which is common law court, separate, yeah, so we hold title to that. So the common law did not recognize this device as recognize the trustee as the owner. So the common law courts didn't recognize the device of the beneficiary. Having right to be the owner. No, they didn't recognize that. The chancellor did, which was, um, equity. But the common law didn't, so you've got a split hair here. The common law never recognized the device, but, and they only recognized the trustee as the owner. So if your mother gave your name to the registrar, the registrar becomes the trustee of the name. Yeah, you become the beneficiary, of course, but the trustee is now the owner, that's what the common law legal system agrees upon. The equity and the chancery don't agree with that, they agree that we, the beneficiaries should have. But the common law, remember, there was only. Okay, looking back at slavery days and we go back to Lord Mansfield again, yeah. Remember, um, that people and us lot, we couldn't have, we couldn't have, um, ownership. We were owned in that certain sense, back in the day as slaves. So it was only those on, of social rank, the men and women of social rank, in that certain sense. Who could own in that certain sense, so they was owning the property, so the common law didn't want that, because. The clergyman was saying, which Lord Mansfield stated later on as well, which I keep going on about. Um, is giving that power to us as the beneficiaries to own the title. You see, common law didn't want us to own the title, they wanted the trustee, the registrars, them lot to keep the title from us. But the chancery gave us the benefit of that, yeah, the trust, so I hope you get that. This development from the Lex Talons, which was, um, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, the Lex Mercatoria, which was the body of laws. Which made up the, the, the law merchant, basically. Um, did the common law, uh, court not want it as it, um, would make the trustee the merchant? So as I keep saying now, because we've taken our name back as a limited company. Um, we basically said to all the businesses and everybody else, right. I got my name from the king, which is the ship, now I'm the merchant of my ship. I have my cargo on my ship to trade with whatever I wanna trade with. Now, they're holding, uh, they're, they're the agent of somebody else's ship, basically. So they're the directors of somebody else's ship, but we'll come back to that, yeah. But it gives us the power to be the merchant now, rather than the listening to. The United Kingdom telling us the rule and to obey that certain rule which they've created. But we, we're gonna talk more about that anyway, um. So basically, a difference of structure in both according to the holding of rights. Yes, you've got different rights holding there, yeah, beneficiary, we can go and claim the legal title, which we're doing as a limited company, yeah. But the common law didn't recognize that, so that's cool, we understood that. Equity also developed the idea of equity redemption. Under common law, on mortgage, if the buyer does not buy before the legal date has gone. Then the buyer would lose the property and would remain liable to pay the remainder of the loan. That's what common law would do if you was buying a property, yeah. If you missed the payment before the legal date, you would lose the property and plus you would have, you'd have to pay the rest of the money. You'd have to pay the rest of the money, boy, that's harsh, that's har- common law is harsh, boy, common law is harsh. Um, yeah, sorry, but under equity, the equity approach allowed the buyer to keep the property. If he repaid the loan with interest and the right to keep the property is known as equity redemption. So equity is offering some remedy against a strict law, a strict common law court. That would, that could not offer remedy. I put that out there, do you agree or do you not agree? That's the thing. Cause it's hard, cause if you agree, yeah, if you agree with equity, it makes you lazy. If you don't, it makes you, it makes you worth, it makes you worthy. If you understand the common law, if you understand it properly, you'll get a feature, but I'm gonna, I'll come back on that later. Um, so if the chancellor dispenses justice based on fairness and equity. Then the person seeking justice, remedy, relief, has to show the, and prove themselves are blameless. Yeah, it's a bit confusing this section, but I'm gonna get around to it. Conditions of a person seeking equity relief was that if a person could not attain justice in the common law court and no remedy. Yeah, so they went there because they couldn't go to common law, but, and also showed that the plaintiff bringing the claim. Was coming with clean hands and without blame. See, that, this is, this messes up my head in a certain sense, but I had to put it this way, okay, so the director. Is the, the, basically the merchant, yeah, uses the third party to sell to you. So the director uses a merchant as a third party to sell to you. So instead of the director coming to you and selling direct to you properly, let me read it first, sorry. Uses the third party to sell to you, so the third party is blameless, yeah, they're blameless. So we go after the director, yeah, meaning the injustice is done to the third party as they are the person you deal with. So they have clean hands, do you get that? Okay, so basically, if I'm the director and you're the customer, yeah, I'm gonna speak to Angela here, yeah. If I'm the director, you're the customer, now. I don't sell you the product, I give it to Alex to sell the product to you.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not selling you anything.
You've just instructed I to sell it.
I'm giving it to Alex, but I'm not giving anything to Alex, cause I don't have nothing to give to Alex.
Right.
A scam, what you doing, man?
So Alex, Alex, Alex becomes, Alex becomes the third party. Because me and you are the one what meant to be doing the deal.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But if I give it to Alex, I know that I don't have nothing to give to you. So I'm gonna give it to Alex and let Alex believe that he's giving you something. So Alex is coming to you with clean hands.
Yeah.
You see, so he becomes the person with clean hands, basically. Um, meaning the injustice is done to the third party, he's the third party.
Yeah.
If it goes to court, that company or that man or whoever. In, in that role can take you to court and stand as the plaintiff. And come with clean hands, because he was just the middle man, he was coming just doing his thing, selling you a product.
Yeah.
Not, not knowing that he didn't have a product to sell.
Yeah, yeah.
So we saw that twist around what they're using, this is what the shareholders and the directors are doing, they're sending out. Companies, company directors are sending out men and women to run around to us lot.
And they don't know what they're doing, yeah.
There you go, in that certain respect, so anyway, so new rights, some conditions and also new remedy. Courts of chancery saw that if a person had suffered a wrong, the court would grant remedy. Yeah, so the courts, the courts of chancery would make up their own devices, yeah, the chancellor would devise something to put. Write that claim. That's what they could do in chancery, because it was arbitration, it was this made up, okay, let me go off my own conscience. And he was using his own conscience rather than the king's conscience, but the king allowed him to do that. Because he was the keeper of the king's conscience, so he was just doing the, 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 do, to do what the king would expect. But he made himself different, separated away from that, still kept that position by separate way, which is a bit mischief. Because if you're separating the way to court, how can you keep the position of king's justice, of king's conscience in that certain sense? That's my question, um, the difference in the common law courts remedy. Is that they only, they will only provide compensation and give you back the loss you had suffered. But some don't want the money as they want, um, what they were after. This is chancery playing on the ego now, yeah. Now, the chancellor devised and developed remedy of performance, injunction, rectification, um, and more. Um, special performance, sorry, injunction, um, and all that, the remedies, yeah. This is one of the, so, uh, were these, were these preference principles better to common law courts? Okay, so, one of them is the remedy of performance, specific performance, so the remedy, remedy. For specific performance, um, in chancery, so you've gone and you bought your dream house, um, the buyer. Agrees to sell the house, yeah. Sorry, the seller agrees to sell the house, yeah, and the buyer, buyer agree, they buy and sell, basically, and there's a contract made. The last moment, the seller changes their mind, so there's a breach of agreement, which is the contract, this is common law. Common law will give you compensation of money, yeah. But now, you don't want money, you want the dream house, that's your ego kicking in, yeah, so chancery play on that. So in chancery, as put in fairness, you would get the house as agreed in the start. So the chancellor would give an order of specific performance. Meaning the person must agree to do the thing and the seller is compelled to sell it to the buyer, basically. So that basically plays on your ego. That's what this remedy is, so we've got to be careful here, because we're digging ourselves into the, of the, of the, of the, of the, of the depth. Of the seven sins here, we're using greed with our ego here, because we want things. Um, some will see this as better remedy, which is the ego again, but some will. Um some will see this as better remedy, which is the ego again, but some believe, some people will see that. Okay, the second remedy of the remedy of injunction, again, let's go to the dream house. So you moved into your dream house and now the neighbor has pigs in the garden and you don't like the smell, you don't like the the noise and this and that, blah blah blah. Common law would give you compensation in money, yeah? To to whatever you, just basically, that's it, just give you compensation, money, can't deny about it, okay? But you don't want that, you want the pigs gone. In chancery equity, you might be able to get an injunction, meaning an order from the court prohibiting someone to do something, et cetera. Stopping your neighbor from keeping the pigs, yeah, making you happy. Again, goes back to your ego, yeah? If you want the house and there's pigs in the neighbors, don't buy the bloody house, buy somewhere else. We ain't got no pigs in the neighbors' back garden. Here you go, bloody dream house. But yeah, these are, but these are the two remedies you had. So basically, um equity in chancery is for the ego and is taking strictness away from the common law legal court. In my view, making persons lazy to do their own, yeah? Because now, because of all of this business and what what they're doing to us and they're watering us down. We're starting not to take care of our own business. We should be taking care of our own business now. But they watered us down and indoctrinated us not to, because they they're playing to our ego. Oh, I want that, oh, yeah, I want that, that that sounds like our children. Where they've given the, they they've given the power to our children to divorce us as 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 parents, if you are a parent. Crazy, um but it's the same same thing. Um in nineteen hundreds, chancery started to develop some of the same problems as the common law legal courts had in fifteen hundreds. So basically, a lot of things were going wrong in there, um the the juries and the judges and all that business. Doing all their decisions, decisions decisions were somewhat arbitrary and became expensive and drawn out, yeah? Especially in nineteen hundreds, in Lord Eldon's case. It became expensive, lengthy and traumatic in chancery. Even Charles Dickens wrote a book and it was called Bleak House. If you read Bleak House, which gives you a thorough comprehension of the running of the legal system in the nineteen hundreds. The story about a disputed will went over many, many generations, basically, goes and it goes through chancery. But going through chancery was so long and at the end of it, basically, was there nothing, nothing, nothing at the end of it. Because it had to pay off, you see, so whatever the will was and it was disputed, it was all gone by the time it got to the end of the case. Because they're spending all all the lawyers and solicitors' fees and stuff, which they had to pay. So but Bleak House is basically about that throughout the book and it gives you a really good in-depth of that, if you wanna read that. Charles Dickens did not agree with chancery and disliked it, as he was also a lawyer himself. Yes, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't like it at all as well. Eighteen seventy three, common law and equity courts were joined under judicature act eighteen seventy three, eighteen seventy five. This became the year where corporations had the same rights given to them as persons, yeah? So the equity courts and the common law courts were joined, yeah, in eighteen seventy three. This was after Lord Mansfield, when Lord Mansfield brought in commercial law. And he was the founder of commercial law, which merges everything, basically. So this came in where and gave corporations, this is why now we're known as the corporation. And as I said, even though one of the divisions of the high courts is of chancery, all courts now deal with common law. And equity principles and remedies, yeah? So basically, um so that's basically what she spoke about in the video, that was the third video. So you've got three videos here, well, I've just gone through, the common law, what, sorry, what is law? What is the common law and what is um uh the common law merge with the equity chancery? Now, a lot of things she misses out, basically, because she goes all through the dates and stuff. But she misses out important information, which I kind of like just quickly noted underneath here. She misses out William Murray, Lord Mansfield, First Earl of Mansfield seventeen hundreds, as the founder of commercial law in England. And merge that with common law also, no mention of Lex Talons and Lex Mercatoria or the law merchants. She didn't mention any of that, but that is a very, very vital part, because that merged the commercial law ring as well, which also added. And that's what the arbitration court was about um in a certain respect. Um Lord Mansfield, he was made First Earl in seventeen seventy six, October, three months after Independence Day. This was Mansfield, William Murray, um of the British colonies of America from British Parliament's final seventeen seventy seven. And this was two hundred and fifty years ago, where Pluto is right now, through that whole revolution. We're going through that right now with Pluto in the end end of Aquarius, this exactly the same space of world was two hundred and forty years ago now. Um she did mention eighteen seventy three, the joiner of common law and equity, after Mansfield's dates. And what become of the joining, basically. And as we know, the certified copy of an entry, which we know is the birth certificate, was created in eighteen thirty six. Two years after abolition of slavery in eighteen thirty four, in internationally and eighteen oh seven in England. If you look at the back of your two pound coin, um some of the coins, they've got eighteen oh seven and it's got two chain links. That's the abolition of slavery two pound coin. Um also, in eighteen thirty six, the US Patent Office burnt down, two years after slavery. The same year as the certified copy of the entry, birth certificate was created. So basically, these are the three videos and these are kind of what the understanding of the law is. And then how it merged and went into the legal sys- the common law, which is a legal system. And then it merged into chancery, which is the commercial law, which we're kind of like living in now, basically. Um so now you're understanding that kind of like the foundation of why we bought ourselves and the name as a as a corporation. Because we now become the merchant, because they don't talk about the merchant law. Because they don't want us to know that we can be a merchant and do business with other merchants.